Good evening.
Good evening.
Welcome to the City of Douglas Mary Commission. This will serve as our regular meeting, July the 11th, 2020. And, excuse me, the next item on the agenda is the invocation, Commissioner Steve Bailey.
If y'all will join me. Our gracious and loving heavenly Father, we thank you again for another day. Thank you for all your blessings, Lord. We especially thank you for how you blessed this community over the many years and as you continue to do so. Thank you for this time together, and we pray that everything we say and do as we conduct the business of the City of Douglas will be pleasing in your sight. I'd like to lift up a special prayer for Roger Cotter as he deals with his heart issue, and just pray that you will grant him a speedy recovery, and he'll be back to good health in a very short period of time. Do forgive us where we failed you, and all these things we ask in your sense. Amen.
Amen. Next item on the agenda is the pledge of allegiance. If you would, if you're able, please stand and face the flag, and we will get started.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Outstanding. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the order of the agenda. It's been motioned in second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the recognition of the state champion softball team, 8U and 12U. That's what time it is. Hey, and drink 12 and say, woo! Somebody help me hold these games tight. That's what we talking about. State champions. Alright, ladies, go ahead and lead us through it. We ready to take pictures and celebrate.
On behalf of-
We got a fire truck out there.
That'll be Thursday.
Thursday, okay.
On behalf of the Douglas Coffee County Parks and Recreation, we would like to present to you, first time ever in Douglas, Georgia, two state champions, first time ever in Douglas, Georgia, fast pitch girls, 8U and 12U champions, 2022. Our 8U girls are being coached by Eric Harris, he's on vacation, so Mr. Matt is gonna introduce those girls.
Rich Matt.
And the 12U girl is Ms. Katie Smith, she'll come up after them and introduce the girls to you all.
Thank you. Have a little fun. Good deal. I just stand there and tell that right now? Y'all pretty late. Come on up. There we go. Come on up, come on up, come on up. Let's sort of get a little line here. Let's scoot over a little bit, because I'm sure, homie, we got a couple people want to take some picture. There we go. Can you see?
Thank you. It's a mission for the work.
Just a little bit more. There we go. There we go. Perfect. Get the, I was squeezed behind, I'm a little tall. Alright, Coach.
I'll introduce the girls. We have a few that are on vaca- or out of town on vacation or what have you, but the girls that we have here, we have Taylin Pochison. Give 'em a little wave, Taylin. We have Kenzie Payne, Nadia Joyner. We have Madeline. Yep, make sure I got the right one, there's twins. Madeline McCollum. Give 'em a wave, she's holding a trophy. Show 'em our big ol' trophy.
Hold it. There you go.
We got Callie Coffey. Callie, give 'em a wave. Laney Justice. Jocelyn Johnson. And we got Maylin. Maylin McCollum. And Charlie. We got, we're missing, let's see, who's not in here today is Olivia Merritt and Embry Whitten. I did say Nadia. I said Nadia, didn't I? And Elena Burton, also not here in attendance.
But just to let you all know, these young ladies, seven, eight-year-olds.
And Maggie Epstein.
They played five games, and they played in the 98, 99 degree weather. We had two innings, we had a short five-minute, five-minute break to give the girls time to cool off and hydrate, but the way they won both games, they had lost one game and then won the championship game. Both games that they lost, they came back in the last inning, the sixth inning, two outs, girl on second and third, and the girl hit it and brought them in for the victory. Both games.
You want to get pictures of them?
Alright, picture time.
Y'all look this way, please.
You ain't paid yet. But you're so cute.
Alright, come around, please.
Ryan, show off that trophy.
There you go. Show off that trophy.
Alright.
Hide your face.
Beautiful smile.
So, let me say something to my girls. So, you hear me saying a million times, a million times, y'all represent our city better than anybody. Y'all think our name is the places that I came to be taken. And I was so proud of you, young ladies. I've been fighting in heat, and I tell folks all the time, y'all the best ambassadors we got. Y'all cute, y'all have a lot of heart, a lot of grit, and that's what we want in the City of Douglas and Coffee County Parks and Recreation. We want everybody in this state to know our name, and because of you, young ladies, they know our name, and they call us champions, okay? They call us champions. Good deal. Thank you. Thank you. And as always, not that I'm so wise because I'm the mayor, I know these young ladies can't drive themselves to practice or games or do their hair. So, we appreciate y'all having them there on time and having them looking cute, okay? Make sure that they look cute. So, great job, parents. We're gonna see y'all next year, okay? Good deal. Thank y'all. Hey, elevation quick. Be up to a ponytail. Okay, you done been broken.
Our next group of young ladies is the 12U champions with Ms. Kate Smith. I think traveled, this team I traveled with the 8U girls, so I'm gonna let her know if y'all agree to run down on what happened today. This is the 2022 state champions, 12U girls.
Come on up, ladies.
Let Coach Katie in the back.
There it is. Alright. Who's doing the announcement for our state champions?
Katie.
Hey, Katie.
Alright.
You gonna speak your part, right?
I'm gonna frown out with pride.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm feeling a little emotional, well.
Good deal.
So, I had, we've got two of the three other coaches here. We got Matthew Adams, Chad Mercer, Mitch Douglas isn't here, but he helped coach also. And down the line, we have Madison, also known as Moth Adam, Canley Douglas, or Ken Ken, Olivia Bronner, Macy Rooker, Emma O.G. Zorley, Adeline Swills, Riley Spivey, Claire Mercer, Madison Rooker, Jocelyn Fender, and Angela Costa. We are missing another one of our pitchers. She's on vacation, and that is Mrs. Zoe Cutten.
Good deal. So, tell us about your adventure.
Well, I, well, we actually, Mitch, Matthew, Chad, all of us have coached on and off together through the years, and we've had a lot of these girls since they were their age. And every year, we battled it out against Wayne County, and we usually have come up second. And we finished second to them at district tournament that was held here in Coffee County. And come to state, they put us in the loser's bracket, and then we beat them twice to win it. So, we sent them home. They got to be second place this time around.
That's all I'm saying. That's all I'm saying.
Well, they beat our 8U team, which consisted of some of these girls, they run rule dust in the second inning when they were 8U. So, these girls have just gotten better every year, and it's, our hard work has paid off.
Good deal.
So, and I appreciate you calling too, because it's not always you calling, yeah, I gotta call from the mayor, saying congratulations, pretty cool.
Hey, I was excited. I was in class when they won, and Landy was, it was Landy, who was giving me the scores?
Me and Ron.
Ron. So, I was in class over at GMA, and I'm like, oh, man, we didn't do too good at the last break. No, I don't wanna do that. So, the instructor looked at me and go, hey, look, look, you just keep teaching the class. You just keep teaching. I got something important. So, and when I got that text that we had won, I went, yes, baby, state champion! And I'm like, okay, Mayor Park, y'all state champions, okay, sit down. Okay, we're good. So, but me, me personally, talking to this young lady here, knowing the trials and tribulations that they went through dealing with Wayne County and having to overcome, and once again coming out of the loser's bracket, shows tenacity, shows true grit, shows that what our community is about, what our 12U state champions are about, and I'm so excited. I feel so much better than I did last year, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Last year, that's one different story, but the thing is, I want you young ladies to know that y'all have represented us well, and every time that y'all step on that field, y'all always give us your best, and I'm deeply indebted to you for your efforts. We have two state championships. I think this is the first time we've ever done that, and that is absolutely amazing. So, thank you. We're gonna get some pictures one more time. Chris, send it.
There you go. Y'all, y'all bring it to the time counter. Put your hands on your knees and start now.
There we go. Alright, come on up, watch the pictures. Come on up, grab the picture. Alright. Alright. Everybody smile. We're good? Alright, we got one more. Good deal. Thank y'all. Man, two state champions. Two? We're gonna give our state champions the opportunity to leave the building. Oh, man. What? State championship. Willis Crocker tells you to date the state championship that they won. He tells you to date. They say it's been state champion for at least seven or eight times. Alright, here we go. We're gonna get back to the adult business at hand. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda items. As always, we'll turn it over to our city manager, and the city manager will read off those items for transparency. Mr. City Manager, please lead us through it.
Mayor Council, we have seven items coming over on the consent agenda. As you said, I'll read them all. First item is approval of the 20, January, approval of the June 20, 22 meeting minutes. Next is to approve automatically declaring asset forfeiture items as surplus items and dispose of those items. The next item is approval of FY23 football and soccer equipment bid. Next item is approval of FY23 multiple pad mount transformer bid. Next item is approval of the deed gift and donation agreement from Thad Carter to the City of Douglas. Next item is approval of the ground lease agreement between the City of Douglas and the State of Georgia. And then the final item would be the approval of the resolution of the broadband element and readout the joint comprehensive 2018 short-term work plan. Those are the items from the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. At this time, I entertain a motion for the items on the consent agenda. It's been motioned in second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is work session items for discussion. Mr. City Manager.
Alright, we've got two items coming over on the work session. First item was item five from the work session. That'll be to conduct a public hearing for the approval of the Jay Sharif Ram LLC alcoholic beverage license, and then that's a public hearing, and it'll be ready for your action.
That's the old Spirit location, just new management.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. City Code provides that you must have a public hearing whenever an alcoholic beverage application is made. So, I open before this time for anybody who wishes to make a comment on the issuance of an alcoholic beverage license for Jay Sharif Ram LLC, which would be doing business at Spirit South, and that is the old Spirit South store down by Lowe's, Lowe's store. Anybody have a comment?
I have a comment, though. I'm trying to be clear. It's not the old building, oh, you know, bourbon king?
The one south, right?
From, from.
By Walmart, Lowe's.
So, it's on the new one, is it?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Thank you, man.
Alright, this is ready for action.
Alright, there was no one here for the public comment. At this time, I will entertain a motion.
Second.
It's been motioned in second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Good deal. Next item?
Alright, next item was item 10 from the work session. This will be Commissioner Pearson's item to discuss the recent violence, violent activity inside the city.
Good evening once again, Mayor Commission. As I stated in the work session, and I wanted to do it again in the regular meeting, because we all know our work session meetings are not televised, and I really want this to be televised, because it's to the public that I'm speaking with. I'm speaking with my fellow colleagues, yes, and my staff members, yes, and my police department, yes, but I'm also speaking to the citizens of Douglas, Georgia, the clergy of Douglas, Georgia. Regarding, we've had about four murders in Douglas in the recent months, and as I said earlier in the work session, I do not want these young people's blood on my hands to be, to sit down and do nothing, say nothing. It's unacceptable. Douglas is getting, we're not a big city like Savannah, we're not a big city out in California that have gangs, so I don't know where this is coming from with young people feeling like they need to be a part of the game here in Douglas, Georgia. We're not big enough to talk about this turf is mine or that turf is yours. So, I'm appealing, I'm appealing to the citizens of Douglas, to the parents, if you know your children are doing some type of activity they should not be, come to somebody and say something. I mean, what has it gotten that we do not value human life? And that seems like that's the message now that's being said. Young people, 18, 19, 20, being murdered because of what? Of what? It's senseless. And I feel it's my responsibility as a leader to come forward and say something. It's not just about sitting up here having a title saying that we are a commissioner or a mayor. It's about what we do in our community. How do we lead? You lead by example. So, all of us are at fault if we continue to sit back and say nothing and let these young folk run rampant to kill each other. As I said earlier, when you're 17, 18, 19, 20 years old, you should be graduating from high school, trying to go off to college, trying to go to the military, trying to get a career, a productive, positive career, to make a life for yourself and your family, not being buried like we've had to do in the recent months. Somebody knows something, and it's time out for being quiet. I don't know what else to do. I've called people, I've gone to people. It's senseless, and I just cannot express it enough. Please come forward, people who know something, come forward. Before action is taken, and I know people can be in a gang, and as long as you're not doing criminal activity, there's nothing wrong with you being in a gang, but once you begin doing criminal activity, then you're violating the law and you're at risk to go to jail. But shooting and killing often, it's got to stop, people. It's got to stop. So, I'm making an appeal to my colleagues, my mayor, my commissioners, to get with staff, city manager, the police department, police department, get with GBI, whomever, and also I'm asking clergy to get involved with us, that we try to find a solution to what's happening. Because this is not the Douglas, this is not the Douglas that I knew, that I came back from Atlanta to come here, because it was so much foolishness going on in Atlanta, and I loved it in Douglas, and I felt safe in Douglas, and I came home to Douglas. And it hurts my heart. I cry, I cry, I cry. Often times, to know that our young people feel like they got to resort, resort to killing one another, I mean, there's got to be an answer. And at this time, I just like to quickly ask if my fellow commissioners have any comments or concerns. What are y'all thoughts? I want to hear what y'all are thinking. Please, please give me some feedback.
Commissioner Durden, I could say, speaking, you know, from my work as a prosecutor, our city is dealing with some of the same challenges that Waycross and Tipton, for example, are dealing with. There is an influence of criminal elements, I think. You know, in talking to our law enforcement partners, these folks want to come into our communities and try to take over our drug trade, and in doing so, it is causing obviously a lot of violence and friction with the money that's available. They're trying to influence, you know, a lot of, most of our young men, you know, that come into the fold. So, the chief, you know, we spoke about this quite a bit, he's established a crime suppression unit that is specifically targeting where we're having problems, and also he's got people going to the gang investigation school to try to get a better handle on things. We look, we've had two murders since July of last year that have occurred in the city, but I think we obviously know that we had some young men from our town who were shot down in Leneer County.
Right.
And I think we had another man from our city who was arrested for a murder, I think, that occurred in Axon County. So, these are, I mean, we're all together in this, but I think we are working toward this, and, you know, the chief is certainly willing to brief and talk to anybody who has any concerns, and certainly we look at any information that anybody can provide that will help us in our efforts to identify folks that are out there selling drugs and committing acts of violence in our community.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Galvin. I appreciate your remarks.
Commissioner Durden?
I can say, Commissioner Durden, we look to the help of this, and my heart still goes out to those families that have lost children, took them to gun violence, and I feel like, you know, as a community, we need to have some type of meeting with the community, because we are really good on that. I can't tell you what a gang is. I mean, I don't know how to look.
Right.
I can't specifically say what. I know some of the things, you know, drug activity, I dated, you know, off the tip of my finger, but when it comes to gang activity, I feel like we need to do some seminars on that, because from what I've been hearing, it's really growing, and I see it. Now, I say that is, but I don't know, but I see things are occurring, and I keep hearing this gang name or that name, that name, name or that name.
Right.
But most of what I see are young people, you know, they hate me, tell me, gang leadership is a nerd, or, you know, they have respect towards me. So, I didn't say what they are. I don't know how to identify.
Right.
So, maybe if we do some workshop with kids, and we can, you know, someone to come in, so that we can identify those things in our community, because it's happening in our community.
Right.
So, I feel like, you know, that, if we just, you know, try to put those things forward, and that's good that he's sending them to investigation, you know, gang investigations do, so that we can identify those things, because it's gonna keep the dealing and continuing, and some may be aware of these things and know what's going on.
Right.
I mean, talk to the young people. Talk to the young people, because I mean, when I was born, Carl Jefferson was out there, you know, Carl Jefferson saved my life. It ain't true. And, because I was so scared of him. And Carl Evans, I was scared of him, you know? I was more of a, but things aren't the same.
They're not.
Things don't make the same. Things change.
Right.
And this generation, the company needs to learn their language. We don't need to be so weak to not say we don't want to talk to them.
Right.
And that's what, that's what it comes out to. You're not too old to talk to, you know, young people.
Right.
And then, I mean, we have to get on that level and talk, and then say, hey, some of this stuff we need to just cease, but if we don't communicate, you know, we don't, you know, reach out to them, it's gonna continue.
Right.
So, I'm just saying just what you're saying.
Yes.
And that is a crack, because I don't want to be nobody else's child.
Right.
That has to go through them.
Right, same.
They have to go through that, and then their family have to go through that, because my heart just goes out to them, because it's senseless.
It is.
It's senseless. I mean, it's very senseless, so I, 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 that goes to my goodness, and I'm very grateful.
Thank you, Commissioner Durden. Thank you very much.
Mr. Commissioner?
I would just like to say, as far as the community, a lot of times when activity goes on and our officers come to try to invest and try to get a handle on it as quick as they can, everyone that's around, nobody know nothing, nobody says nothing. Sometimes you can be right there next to the individual that the accident done happened to, and when the officers get there, or the investigator get there, you know, I don't know nothing. My challenge is, please, ma'am, please, sir, we got to start to say something, because in order to get on top of this, if you don't say nothing, you know, it would never, never come to the end, you know?
Right.
You don't have to, what Tomac said, be out front. We got anonymous phone numbers that we can call to inform the chief or the investigator on what went on, you know, everything, and your name will never be known.
Right.
They just need to be, so they'll know which way to go, because a lot of times, we have had people, hundred people there, and you ice, and I have been to yesterday, that when it happened, ice people, nobody knows nothing, but you're right there with it, but don't know nothing. So, please, ma'am, please, sir, say something, you know what I'm saying? It's not like you gonna be a rat, tell a tale or something like that. You don't have to be out front, just call the anonymous number and let us know what's going on. So, please, ma'am, please, sir, anything goes on, you see something, please feel free to call the chief, the number that we have, call him, you know, everything, so we can solve these problems, you know what I'm saying?
Thank you. Commissioner McNeil, do you have any comments?
Well, Mayor, we know that this starts at a very young age. With Pearson, I went to see one of the new movies in the theater with my grandbabies this past weekend, and I was shocked, because the theme of the movie was these cartoon characters wanted to grow up to be a villain, and that's what, you know, that's what kids are seeing. And I think, I think this is some of our problem.
Right.
You know, and the acceptance of this and the fact that we depend so much on this to entertain our children, or to whatever, and we got to get their attention back, I think, from this. I know that sounds old-fashioned, and it sounds very simplistic, but I just think that it starts, of course, in the family and the school system. Churches are great. The camps we're here will do anything we can to help in any neighborhood situation. And- And, like I said, if anybody, and as the councilman was saying, with the campaign, "See something, say something", you know, is, is very, should be going on. I think it gets worse during the summer. Kids have more time.
Time on the hands, right, right.
There's more mental health issues right now than, than we had in the past.
Than in the past, right.
So, I just, I'm scared for the community.
Yeah, thank you. That's a great point about those phones because, I mean, I know I tell my daughters, I don't like how their children are on the phones all the time. I mean, all the time. Whatever happened to reading a book? Getting a book, reading it? And the stuff that's on those phones and those videos or whatever, I think that's a lot of the problem too. But I'm not going to hold up, uh, mayor, are you going to call them?
Uh, Ms. Bailey?
Oh, I, I agree with Ms. Pearson, it's a very legitimate issue.
So, uh, my thing is this right here. Over the last couple of months, I've been holding meetings with educators, some community leaders, trying to address this issue.
Okay.
Uh, one of the things about being proactive is, is what I think we're missing. Uh, I'm always curious about when something happens, nobody has their cellphone doing this right here when it's going on. However, as soon as the police show up, all the phones come out. All the phones come out. So, for the neighborhood to be safe, as the campaign says, "See something, say something", so we have to be proactive. If you see something in your, in your neighborhood, you have to say something. Right now, the city of Douglas has eleven thousand eight hundred and eighty-nine citizens. There's approximately, what, seven or eight police officers patrolling now? There's four.
Four, maybe five.
Four, maybe five. That's all that's patrolling. So, in order to, in order to do something, we have to be vigilant to make sure that the community understands is that in order for the police to be able to solve something, when they get there, the crime has already occurred. And everybody's gone. One of the things that I will say is what got me on this, on this, uh, journey about this is just seeing the, the number of kids that are ten and twelve and fourteen and fifteen that are committing these crimes. Uh, the police chief has stood up here for two years and said that during the summertime, crime goes up. After school hours, crime goes up.
Right.
Why? Because sometimes these kids are at their home by themselves, and they don't have any adult supervision.
Right.
So, the second part, along with being proactive, is parents.
Exactly.
And one of the things that I've been talking to my focus groups is this. When I was growing up, the standards that were placed on me were placed in the house. Uh, my grandmother, my mom, my dad, my aunts, my uncles. Still don't understand why my Uncle Boleg had that much authority over me. He's only three years older than me. You know what I mean? He's only three years older than me. And then, when I went out into the community, whether I was in Sugar Hill, the Millquarters, Washington Heights, the community enforced what my parents
Right.
and my uncles say. Then nobody run me off the block except for Van Bailey, Aston Bailey, uh, Junior, Jesse Bailey, Ronnie Johnson. All those are my uncles, right? Not that much older than me. But, here's the thing, what is happening in our society. We are expecting the police, the church, the school defect to set those standards now.
Yeah.
And then, the parents in the household has to accept or reject them. So, the next thing is policing. When we start an aggressive policing program to, to correct stuff, because that's what the community says, then it becomes a problem. You know, you can't do this, you can't do that. Oh, Facebook, it's harassment, it's racial profiling, it's this, it's that. Well, there's, Commissioner Galvin gave me a book, Police by the Dots. And those dots represents crime. If there's a blank page over here, you don't need that many police officers over here. But if it's loaded over here, that's where the police officers need to be. The last thing is protecting. Protecting. What are we protecting? Are we really and truly protecting our children? Are we really and truly protecting our children? And I'm not trying to sensationalize this. I've been at this for over two months now. For over two months. Is, when we have a mass shooting in this country, oh, Lord, it's, it's a problem. Guns, this, we need to have a candlelight vigil. We're going to do this, we're going to do that. And we do absolutely nothing. Because there are some hard conversations that have to be had. There's some hard decisions that have to be had. And guess what? It's still somebody's child that's in that gang. Grandma used to say, "I don't care how bad he is, he's still my child." And you want the best for your child and you want your child to have the opportunity to be saved. The last thing, not the last thing, one of the things that I have learned is the level of crime. What's accepted? A young man get killed, as soon as they know that the person is dead, all of a sudden, how long does it take for the phone to start ringing with accurate information? They get solved rather quickly. But when there's sixty-five round shot or somebody shooting over here, nobody ever calls the police. Nobody ever, I talked to some citizens over there, uh, Eastside, said that there are shootings over there all the time. Nobody's called the police. Nobody's called the police. So, that level of acceptance, and what I try to get people to understand is that this problem does not have one solution.
Right.
Uh, the group I talked with today for two hours, because they are very passionate about it, we feel as though that we cannot fail. So we have to try to craft a plan. And what does this plan encompass? Me, what I've been doing, I think it's a three-pronged approach based off of the individuals I've talked to. The first thing is, I don't, I've talked to, uh, the housing authority about, uh, trying to reopen Roundtree. Think, think reopening Roundtree hits a few kids
Exactly.
to give them a little safe haven.
Yeah.
I also think, uh, having a conversation with, uh, the school board about the Boys and Girls Club, expanding the Boys and Girls Club. Why we want to expand the Boys and Girls Club? One, there's a huge waiting list on the Boys and Girls Club. We have the teen center, we have the Magnolia Room, we have Dogwood Room. Uh, there's an opportunity to expand that program to get some of those kids. So we get some over here, uh, in Roundtree because one of the things, and I'm not trying to segregate by Roundtree. Highway one fifty-eight is a four-lane highway, and it's some crazy people be going across there. When I was growing up, eight, nine, ten years old, walk all over the city. Can't do that now. So we have to make sure that we're mindful of, uh, Highway one fifty-eight. So there has to be something over there for those kids. It has to have a walkability. Has to have a walkability where that kid can jump on that bicycle or walk there. Uh, the Boys and Girls Club, uh, the school system already has the bus routes. They have the programming. They have all this already in place. But we can get some of those kids off. And then, the other thing is, uh, a summer league for basketball or extending to baseball. That gets another group of kids.
Right.
So, there cannot be one solution that's going to blanket everybody.
Exactly.
So what we have to do is, we have to have an approach from different sides. Uh, and our focus group today, ladies say, "Look, my son is not athletic. He's a nerd, what are we going to do with him?" You know what I mean? So, it has to be a conversation. But it's just like I tell people about life. You have to make a decision.
Right.
You, it's, it starts by you making the decision. And you making that decision, and then your parents, uh, supporting that decision and holding you accountable. So, my thing is this right here. Where do we get, look, it's going to take a heavy hand at first. It's going to take a heavy hand at first. Is this council willing to endure that period of heavy hand?
Well, that's part of it. Also, the other part is the focus group that you're talking about. Each one of us, if we're willing, need to be a part of it. And then all those other entities that I mentioned. We need to try to include all of those, especially clergy. And you mentioned something I left off about this school board. I mean, it needs to be, you know, a, a very, varied entities of people coming to the table to find solutions. And a lot, most of the problem is gonna, it's got to start with the home.
It's got to.
It's got to start with the home. And that's why I say, some of these parents know something with some of these kids being killed, they know something. Where are they? Where are they? They're on Facebook talking about, "You riding with me?" Come on now, parents, you got to step up. I'm sorry, parents got to step up. But that focus group you mentioned, I think that's a good approach. All, all of the things that you have all said, I appreciate it, it's very helpful. We need to keep mind of it and try to see if we can build on everything that has been said.
Well, let me say this here about the focus group. One of the things that we decided in the focal group that, because I call very strategic people in, in the one focus group I was in today. Let me say this right here, you've heard me say this a million times. Don't commit me to death. I don't need everybody getting in there testifying. I don't need everybody testifying. Right now, our kids need some type of action plan.
Exactly.
I don't need Christian to stand up and talk for ten minutes. I don't need Mike to stand up, I don't need you to stand up. We, we always, we know the issue. We know what the concern is. So how do we address it? How do we address it? Because guess what? It's still somebody's child.
That's right.
It's still somebody's child.
Right.
And that's the part I try to get people to understand. When we do teen court, it's still somebody's child. We are able to divert the many, but still a few still end up going to YDC.
Right.
But we're trying.
And that's all I'm saying here tonight.
And it comes down to, it comes down to, as a community, you have to decide what type of community do you want.
That's right.
You have to decide.
That's right, because...
And, and not only policing, but code enforcement. And then I say this, and I'll be quiet. I was in one of my classes and we were talking about code enforcement. I'm like, yeah, we get ready to go through all this code enforcement. The guy said, "We started code enforcement in one of our rundown communities. Dilapidated houses, burnt-down houses, drug-infested, overgrown lots, junk cars, and all this and that." We went in there and cleaned that neighborhood up. It took us three years to clean that neighborhood up. The houses were selling for sixty-five and seventy-five thousand. A house just sold for a hundred and twenty-five thousand. That's fifty thousand dollars because the community decided that they wanted that neighborhood cleaned up. But guess what? Oh, they picking on me because they got to move their car. Look, you have to decide. And we, as the governing body, we have to decide. It, it's, it's good to say this right here, but with Mary, Isaac, Roger, and Dad gum around to go out there to code enforce, we got to have their back. Because in the long run, it's going to clean up. It helps the policing out.
Right.
And I think that, that, that Herculean effort that we had, uh, this weekend with, uh, the water break, everybody was pitching in. Every, so it's going to take everybody.
Everybody.
Look. The American only do so much. This council can only do so much. And as I say this right here, the biggest voice is that parent.
That's it, that's it.
My daddy used to tell me, when something happened, boy, I'm glad I beat your butt. You know what I mean? I'm glad I beat your butt. So, my thing is this right here, there is no, and I want to be clear, there is no substitute for good parenting. There's no substitute for good parenting in that family unit. There's no substitute. I don't care how many programs you make.
Exactly.
That's what a gang is, it's, it's a safety counterfeit for a family.
Yeah, yeah. Right. And they get in to have association, affiliation. And what we, well, see, the bottom line, the bottom line to that problem is the fact that we have fifteen, sixteen-year-olds who become parents.
That's true.
They don't know how to parent. They don't know how. It takes intervention to help them. And we got the agencies that can intervene and the resources that can intervene if we just care enough. It's, it's not going to be an easy task, I, I know it's not. But if we care and love our community, it's going to be well worth it. If we stop it from becoming another Savannah, another New York, another California, where people are terrified to walk the streets. Uh, 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 I'm going to say this. A citizen called me, how long ago? A week or so ago? Terrified, terrified. Because there was going to be some shooting in their neighborhood. They got wind of it in time and called me. I had them to call the city manager. And we were able to curtail it.
See that? That's what has to happen.
But we've got to get to the parents. We've got to work closely with the school system. Charlie, you were going to say something, I'm going to go sit down because I'm hurt.
I just want to...
Thank y'all.
And I'm, I'm going to share a bit of our private conversation that we had. Now, you know, parenting, I mean, some of the feel-good stuff or some of the parent stuff, that's what other agencies do. But once we crack this door now, when I, and I shared this with Ms. Pearson now, some of this is fire, once we've lost them to a gang, it's hard to get them back.
Yeah, right.
And it's a fire ant situation. You're never going to get rid of them, but we can move them. And I could commit to moving them.
Yeah. Do what we got to do.
Now, when we start moving now, and I told, and I told you this in our private conversation, I don't want to hear the system is picking on, and we're attacked. But I mean, I'm not going to send these officers out and commit to stuff for not having the backing. But we'll start moving them tonight. But now, like I said, when we say the initial word, "gang", that's, 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 that's anonymous. But when you start saying, "Who is the gang?", that's your, that's, that's somebody in your family? That's somebody at your church? And then all of a sudden, the police are back. Or, or code enforcement is back. Now, I said, and once we crack that valve, it's kind of like this weekend, once we crack that valve, the flood's coming.
Right.
You know? Um, and, and some of these boys and girls are dangerous in, in the situation, not calling names, don't give out specifics. There's people in there that just got out of jail. So that shows they ain't got any sense. Because if I just got out of jail, I'm headed to West Green and finding me a cubby hole to hide in somewhere.
That's right.
But when you go right back, there's people in there that are wounded. There's other people that have warrants. Uh, they don't care, so the only way we had, that's heavy hand stuff.
And like I said, there's two types of policing.
But it solves something. That citizen picked up the phone and called Commissioner Pearson. Commissioner Pearson called you and you called the chief or whoever and resolved that situation.
And so, went to jail and that kind of stuff, whatever.
So who knows what would have happened if that young lady or man wouldn't have called you?
Right.
So that gets it started.
That's it.
So, I mean-
My thing too.
Yes, sir.
My thing too, I'm just going to be honest. This little city and the things that are current and happening and the way we talk right now, I mean, something should be identified.
Thank you.
I mean, yeah, something should be identified, right? I don't care if it's my brother, if this thing is-
That's exactly right.
My brother, I mean, I can't die for him. We got to have him a family.
That's right.
At the end of the day, you got to stay in for a while.
Right.
And I'm just going to be honest.
That's why they got to do it.
If it's my brother, my sister, it don't matter. If it's the brain change, it brain change, but the thing about this, you can't know and don't say nothing.
That's right.
Because somebody knows.
Would you like this?
Somebody knows something. And at the end of the day, if we're going to say so, are we willing to just leave?
Just keep burying them for-
We can come up with a group. We can come up with a gang. We can strategize. We can put a Boys and Girls Club over there. Boys and Girls Club over there, a, a Roundtree here. But if you don't attack the problem, and a lot of this problem for drugs too. Our young people are on this island and all this stuff like they, and they losing their mental capacity. And, I mean, hey, and they ain't turning to the mommas. They ain't turning to them because some of those mommas are younger than me. And I'm thirty. I mean, they young, they thirty, they, they young. So at the end of the day, we got this one over there. I mean, trying to raise this child, this child coming up. And I talk morals and values because they momma's, they momma, they momma and father didn't come up on morals. So I mean, if we know something, say something. But the thing about this, we got to build that platform for what dress is. Because if we don't dress it, it's going to keep on happening. And the more it happen, the more our community is going to run down. The more they going to drive people out, the more it's going, it's going to continue to do that. But the thing about this, like you say, when you hear it, you're going to help you, you know, it is what it is. At the end of the day, it is what it is. Because it ain't, it ain't a problem to me. What you got to do is-
You're good? All right.
Good. At this time, uh, I think that's all the comments. At this time, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
No moves.
Is there a motion in second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We adjourn.